We'll be in in just a minute. Councilman Blair?
Yes.
Councilman Good?
Here.
Councilmember Rusing?
Present.
Councilwoman Scholl?
Here.
Councilman Sishka?
Here. All right, thank you for that. Welcome, everybody. Sorry we're running a little late. It is Matt Pedraki's fault that we're late, just for the record. We've had a lot of meetings today, so thanks for excusing us for being a few minutes late. We do have one item today. We do have public comment cards, so it's good to have Gary Woodard, and I'm glad he's doing much better, I hope, today. So we will do item 3A now.
Water trend analysis update from Gary Woodard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Is this on? You can... okay, great. I'm going to start off with just a very brief PowerPoint presentation, and then I'm going to walk you through the model, so...
Gary, as much as you can, speak into the mic. We have folks streaming and whatnot, so it's helpful. Thank you.
This is picking up? Okay, thank you. So the presentations that I gave in the past, this was kind of the showstopper slide. It showed that, for a long time, despite population growth, you were actually, over the long term, delivering less and less water. And it wasn't going down every year. There were a number of years where it would spike up and other years where it would spike down, but the trend was definitely downward. In fact, over that 14-year period, it was dropping about 2% per year. And this is a trend that is seen in almost all municipal water departments, in both the Phoenix and the Tucson metropolitan areas as well. The increased efficiency of water use is just overwhelming the increase in population and the increase, the growth of customers. I looked at the last two years, and it's kind of flatlined over the last two years. You delivered just about the same amount of water in 2018 and 2019 as in 2017, despite your population grew by 3.3%. But the amount of water delivered was essentially flat. So we still have that baked-in increasing conservation going on year after year. So the goals of this project were to develop a water supply and demand model that included looking at data right down at the individual customer level, getting household-level data and individual customer data for all classes of customers and different points in time, separating the indoor from the outdoor demand, because that makes a big difference as to the effective hit on the aquifer, and separating the sewed and unsewed indoor demands for the same reason. I also examined all the trends in the levels of water use for different purposes and then the amounts available from different sources, and compared several different types of customers and per customer usage. And all that information went into a model of both demand and supplies, and it forecasts out to 2030. It starts in 2010, so depending on what we're looking at, the historical data is 2010 through 2017 or 2018. For a couple items now, I've got the 2019 data, but the period 2020 to 2030 is the forecast period. At the household level, I had a variety of different types of data, different sources, including the meter records and sewer billing records, and information on who is on sewer and who is on septic, and what kind of meter types and in the ages. Did some Google Earth analysis to look at individual neighborhoods and households. And also worked with the Yavapai County Assessor's Office to pull a lot of data out for a number of years. I believe I started in 2015. It might have been 2014. More aggregated data came from other sources such as census numbers and federal housing surveys, and gross numbers provided by the city, pumpage, reservoir diversions, conservation programs that are in place, the rate study that was done about a year and a half ago, and so on. One of the really important sources of data is the annual reports prepared for the State Department of Water Resource every spring for the prior calendar year. So in another three months or so, you'll be submitting your 2019 report, but I had the reports through 2018. So the diagram I showed with boxes and arrows about how all the water was moving through the system pinpointed where water was leaving the system. Most of the water that's pumped goes to metered sewer customers. Most of that is used indoors. Almost all of that ends up making its way to the sewer treatment plants, and almost all of that is either used for golf courses, sand and gravel, or recharged into the aquifer. So most of the water goes in a circle. It's those areas where water escapes the system that you need to focus on if you want to improve the water budget. So the largest one is evaporation from your reservoirs, and there's very little you can do about that. The metered outdoor uses of all sorts, that's the red slice there, is nearly as big. Somewhat smaller is the amount of reclaimed water that is used by the golf courses, and then we have indoor uses for homes that are on septic tanks, and then the potable system leaks is significantly smaller, and the others are much smaller than that. So the model that I will be showing you, and I'm beginning to wonder if you'll be able to read it, but this is the dashboard of the model. This is where you set different things and you see overall conclusions. The policy options inputs is where you can change, you can create new policies that would start in 2020 or at a later point moving forward to either enhance conservation efforts or try to enhance your existing supplies. There's, I believe, a dozen different policy options that I've heard discussed to one degree or another here that I've included in here. They could be, others could be added, some could be removed. Then there's the factors that are not water policy, the exogenous factors. How fast are you growing? Are we in a drought? Did the drought end? And those factors can be set, changed in that box, and those graphs will show you the impact of those on some of the drivers of water demand, such as population and precipitation. At the bottom, you get a water budget summary. The stacked bar chart to the left shows the four largest categories of water being lost from the system, and you can see how those change as you change the different options, create different scenarios. And that table and the graph below is the water budget summary for a particular year. It says, in the middle there, it says this is the supply-demand model for 2017. You can click on 2017, and you'll get a menu of all the years between 2010 and 2030, so you can set it for any particular year. The demand management options affect the parameters shown in these graphs, and supply enhancement options are shown in that set of graphs right there. This is the way I've typically built the models, but I know that there seemed to be some fondness for this graph when I showed it before, because it lets you see how the water moves through the system. It has these boxes which are stocks of water, and the arrows represent the flows between the different ones, and they're color-coded with the green being the groundwater, the blue being surface water or rain. You know, purple is your treated wastewater, black is untreated wastewater, and red is evapotranspiration. And on this slide as well, you can set the year anywhere between 2010 and 2030. Each arrow has a number next to it indicating which way the water's moving and the quantity for that particular year. And below it, because this is the actual model, there's a large table which shows the values, all those values that are displayed up there, and some supplementary values for each of the 21 years between 2010 and 2030. That view gives you the big picture, but it doesn't drill down into all the different types of customers you have. So I added a third screen which shows more detailed demand. It breaks down the customers into single-family homes, multifamily homes, those on sewer, those on septic. It also shows the commercial, industrial, and institutional or government customers known as CII, and the other categories, the large turf, the other turf, the construction, and the miscellaneous other customers. There's actually in the table below even more categories. For example, the CII is broken out into commercial, industrial, and government. And so this just gives you more detail about what's going on with the demand portion of the model. Once again, you can change the year so the numbers represent any year in that timeframe. Once again, you've got numbers by the arrows to show the amount of water moving on an annual basis from place to place, and you've got this increased detail on the potable water customers. So I showed this graph last time as well. This shows the best evidence we have for how much of all the different leaks from the system are potentially something that could be saved, to one degree or another. If you look at those, you'll see the biggest slice is indoor water use by homes on septic tanks, followed fairly closely by all the various metered outdoor uses where the water is evapotranspired by the plants or it just evaporates away. The other two of significant size include the reclaimed golf irrigation water and potable system leaks. There's not a whole lot you can do in that area, because you've got some very old pipes and you've got a pretty darn low rate of leakage already. So that's why that slice is not any bigger. So how can you improve your water budget, become even more sustainable? Some promising areas include enhanced conservation with a focus on indoor demand. As I pointed out last time, if you increase efforts on conservation on indoor demand where people are on sewer, you gain very little, because almost all, some 95% of the water used inside winds up getting to the sewer, and even in treating it, you lose a few percent. But, you know, much better if the customers are on sewer to focus on outdoor demand, not indoor. Reducing turf anywhere you can is a good thing. I know a number of water providers in the Phoenix and Tucson metropolitan areas have started to look very hard at homeowners association and common areas that have turf that nobody walks on except the guy pushing the lawnmower. And one of the options that's catching on very quickly down there that may not work here is a huge shift towards artificial turf for those types of areas where it's just for appearances. Enhanced conservation of indoor demand for the customers on septic tank. Almost all the water that is used indoors and flows to a septic tank is lost. On average, the estimate is about 90%. The remaining 10% that may get back to the aquifer is not awesome stuff, and even though, you know, it's back to the aquifer, it hasn't been treated the way water that goes to one of your advanced wastewater treatment plants is treated. Reducing the number of customers on septic is another approach to the same end there. Increasing the water use efficiency of your commercial, industrial, institutional customers is another option. And probably reducing leaks on customer side of the water meter. The problem is that we don't, right now, have a very good guess as to how much water is leaking on the customer side of the water meter. Studies across the country, across the Southwest, show wildly different amounts, anywhere from 4% to 15%, often 10% is used as a guess, if you don't have any better data. You may be able to get a better guess about that once all of your water meters have been swapped out for the newer automatically reading water meters. They can help you narrow that down a little bit, but that will be some years in the future, I think. One thing that all of these possibilities have in common is that, unlike developing a new water source, these can all be done incrementally and over time at different rates. If you've got a little more money in the budget, you can speed it up. If the budget's a little bit tight, you can slow it down for a year or two. If one seems to be working better than the other, you can switch resources from one effort to the other. So they're not an all-or-nothing kind of option. So in conclusion, four factors are driving these per customer declines, and will continue to do so, at least out through 2030, which is far as I looked. You've got your changing demographics, households getting smaller. Your households are smaller than average, but they're also shrinking faster than elsewhere in the state or the country. And more transient population, fairly high percentage of people who are not here year-round, your active conservation efforts, your passive conservation, which means every appliance and fixture eventually reaches the end of its useful life and gets replaced. And virtually all of those, if you go to Home Depot or Lowe's and buy a new toilet or buy a new showerhead or dishwasher or clothes washer, is going to be a lot more efficient than the one that you bought 10 or 12 or 15 years earlier. That's the part that's baked in that seems to be driving the demand down about 1.5% a year, regardless of all other factors. And then finally, the new homes that come in have all-new stuff and tend to have much more water-efficient landscapes, so the new homes coming in are just much lower in water use than the overall existing water stock. So under conservative assumptions, this model with baseline assumptions, by conservative, I mean erring on the side of higher demand, it's going to be essentially flat for the next 10 years. Factors beyond your control could, of course, change that, and whoop! And the model does give you the ability to explore about a dozen different policy options for further reducing demand or supplementing supply. And now I'll take some questions, if there are any, and then I will show the model.
Okay, questions, comments from the council? Councilmember Rusing?
Thank you, Gary. I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
I have a question I'd like to ask respectfully about the, to clarify the scope of your project. City water users, was it just households or meters in the city limits, or did you include all the users in the county?
I included everybody that gets their water from the City of Prescott Water Department.
So would that include our neighbors, the Yavapai Indian Tribe? Did you include them?
They show up on some of the reports, so I have limited data on them.
Okay, and how about...
I don't have the kind of detail that I would for other things.
And then how about our neighbor to the north, Chino Valley? We supply residential water. Were they included?
Yeah, everybody who has served by the Water Department, that's my scope. That's my geographic scope. Yeah, it's not the city limits.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Councilman Sishka?
Gary, a couple of things. When we recharge water out at our recharge basin out by the airport, there are some people who claim that it takes 100 years for that water to get down to the aquifer. Is that true, or is it just an educated guess or a wild guess?
Councilman Sishka, I always preface these remarks by saying, I'm not a groundwater hydrologist. However, I've been hanging out with them for 35 years. And when you cite a recharge facility, you do a lot of testing beforehand, and you make sure that the rate that the water will percolate into the ground is rapid, and that the amount of time it takes to get to the aquifer is short. It can be measured in days, it can be measured in weeks, in some extreme cases, it might be measured in months, but it is not decades. It's not years. It's pretty darn quick.
Okay. And the second question is, there are folks who claim that only 40, we only get 40 to 50% of the water that we actually reclaim through the sewer system.
You're saying of all the water that is put into the system, that only 40% makes its way back to the wastewater treatment plant?
That's what certain people say, yes.
That sounds low, and in a second, we'll have a graph in front of us, and we'll look at those two numbers. I believe it's higher than that. I mean, none of the water going to customers on septic comes back. None of the leaks, you know, shows up in the sewer system. But oddly, you know, and none of the outdoor uses show up. But your ratio of outdoor uses to indoor uses is lower up here than it is in most of the rest of Arizona, simply because of your climate being different. In addition, you've got your eye-in-eye water. When it's particularly wet and rainy and when the streets are running and the washes are running, water finds its way into the sewer system. You get a significant additional amount of essentially rainwater added. It shows up at the wastewater treatment plants, so...
Councilman Sishka, were you speaking specifically to folks that are on both the water and the wastewater system?
Yes.
The number's not anywhere near 40%. Gary's giving you the totality of water, but for stuff that goes through the system, it's 95%?
Well, the indoor uses.
Yes, I was talking about indoor, you know, basically, my house is hooked up to sewer.
Yeah.
We get city water, my house is hooked up to sewer, and so people out there are saying, well, only 40 to 50% of that's going back to the city.
I could give an example. Let's say you do a load of laundry. If you weighed the laundry when you put it in the machine, and then you weighed it when you pull it out, it's heavier. Let's say you have an old top loader, uses 40 gallons. You're probably going to have about 2 gallons of water in the clothes. You're going to throw it in the dryer, and it's going to evaporate 2 gallons. So that means you've lost 5%. If you've got a new front loader, it's going to use about 20 gallons, and when you pull it out, they spin a heck of a lot faster at the end. And when you pull it out, you're going to have about a gallon of water in there, and you're going to throw it in the dryer, and it's going to evaporate that 1 gallon, and you're going to lose about 5%. For a shower, you might lose about 3%. Councilmember Rusing would lose a lot more than me. She probably has a hairdryer. You know, so you can look at all these different uses, and yeah, not all of the indoor uses get back, but on average, it's about 95%. Now, when it goes to the wastewater treatment plant, and they have to remove the solids and they have to treat it, you lose about another 5% in that process. So indoor water uses in a home, about 90% of that is available as reclaimed water, either for irrigation or for recharged into the aquifer.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Good?
Thank you. Mr. Woodard, on your projections for quote-unquote "flat" for the next 10 years, are you basing that on total production or gallons per person per day?
No, total production.
And that's based upon a projection or an assumption of about 1.5% to 2% growth?
Yes. It's based, I think my baseline is 1.5% growth per year. Over the last two years, I think you've averaged 1.6%.
On your bar graph where it shows potential savings, the x-axis, I'm assuming that's acre-feet per year?
Yes.
Okay, so if we're looking at maybe indoor uses to septic, we have the potential of about 500 acre-feet per year that could be managed more efficiently?
That's correct.
By, for example, what?
Well, there's about a half a dozen things you could do to try to not lose as much water through indoor uses in septic tanks. Putting those homes, older homes that are on septic onto sewer is the most complete thing you can do. Assuring that new homes that might otherwise be on septic go onto sewer is almost as good. It's not as good, because those homes are pretty darn water-efficient, they're just not going to use as much water indoors. Encouraging people on septic to reuse gray water is probably about the least effective thing you can do. If you used carrots and offered bigger or different or more rebates to people on septic to accelerate the rate at which they're replacing their old fixtures and appliances with new, more water-efficient ones, that would be pretty good. That would be quite effective. And I just want to make it clear, no one has told me that these are being planned or that anybody on the council thinks this is a great idea, but you could also, like, mandate that when a home on septic is resold, that you've got to upgrade the toilets and the showerheads and the airators. That's another thing you could do. And those are all options that you can turn on or off or set to different levels within the model.
And the other area that looks highly attractive for reduction is metered outdoor evapotranspiration. Are other communities finding different ways to reduce that or provide metering?
Yes, we see, if I look at all the different cities that I've done models for in Maricopa and Pima County, they're all seeing, they're all delivering less water, you know, in 2019 than they did in the year 2000, without exception. If you break that down into, how much was that indoor savings versus outdoor, it really differs from city to city. On average, it's a little faster reduction outdoors than indoors, but that's because there's more outdoor use to begin with. So all of these cities do have multiple, and in some cases fairly aggressive, conservation programs to reduce outdoor use. The most effective thing, it took a heck of a long time, but they began decades ago just tearing out the turf in street medians and in front of city hall and all public places, and putting in very nice ziriscap and very nice native drought-tolerant landscaping. And people began to view that first as interesting, and then as normal, and finally as desirable. You can't find a front lawn in Tucson. You just cannot. And although you can find a lot of front lawns in Scottsdale, they're increasingly artificial grass. That's been the big surprise. Nobody has pushed installation of artificial grass. A lot of conservation professionals have strong mixed feelings about artificial turf, and yet that's the single biggest factor over the last three to five years that's been driving down outdoor water demand. Nobody saw it coming, nobody's been encouraging it, and yet, boom, there it was.
Interesting, thank you.
Councilman Blair?
Question on the potable water side. I often think there's ways that we can find out about leakage in our house, and I was just wondering, based upon my own experience, that we could look at the city zones and send out a letter saying that, please do not use water in your house during 8:00 to 10:00 on this day. We are going to check your system by physically seeing if the meter's running and nobody's home. And an example would be, I woke up the other night, and the toilet's running, and I went, well, there's nobody awake at 2:00 o'clock. I went in and looked, nobody's there, but my toilet was running. So as simple as changing out a flap and being able to have the city look at the water bills and/or physically check a whole block or two blocks or five blocks, and if they see the meter running when there's nothing going on in the house, to send them a letter to say, you need to have a plumber check your usage on your house. You see, is there a percentage that we may save in water use there?
Yeah, that's a brilliant idea, and in fact, one that I've been pushing to some cities for the last couple of years. And you don't have to tell people, stop using water. You just go check it at 3:00 AM, and then you check it at 4:00 AM. There's a few people up there, but for the most part, not. And so a lot of cities jumped on the new meters that allow you to just drive a truck down the street and pick up the meter readings, and that's great. Badgers were the most common. I believe it's badgers here. Unfortunately, the first couple of badger meters that could do that don't save, they don't keep a record of the readings. They update their reading every hour, and they send it out to be picked up. The newer ones do, they keep hourly readings going back 100 days. So you can actually query them and see hour by hour how much water is being used going back over three months. If you find a household where there's always water use between 2:00 and 3:00 AM, and always water use between 3:00 AM and 4:00 AM, there's a continuous leak. Unfortunately, it's not as easy... Unfortunately, it's not as easy or simple as you might think. Unfortunately, a lot of the, throw something at me if I'm wrong, a lot of the badger readers that can be automatically read here were the, you know, the early ones that don't keep the data. I think it's well under half that do. But the technology's coming, you know, meters get replaced every so many years, because if you don't, they start under-recording. So, the technology is almost there to do exactly that.
And I guess the other question I had on the sewage side, we're getting ready to kick off a really difficult thing, and not many people like to talk about sewers. However, we happen to have in our area a lot of them that our septic systems have been in place for 50-plus years that need to be removed. If you were to say we were to replace 100, what type of benefit would that show by putting that into our sanitary system?
That's the kind of question that the model can answer.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Gary, thank you so much for being here. Appreciate this data, it's a fascinating report. We talked a little bit about it this morning. Especially appreciate the very frank answer to Councilman Shishka about the recharge. And I believe that we have a, pretty much a state-of-the-art system, and so, which tells me that our recharge is happening very quickly, or quickly compared, certainly not 100 years. I'm interested in the reservoir evaporation. So, we show it's probably our largest, and you're saying it's the hardest to save that. Are there any technologies out there that have been able to try to save evaporation from reservoirs?
Mayor Protem, or, there are, but you know, I have not looked closely, I don't know who gets that extra water. That's the first question you'd wanna ask, you know? If you reduced the evaporation and there's more water in the reservoir, is that yours to do with as you want? Maybe, I just would make sure I knew the answer to that first. There are methods, but I think you can set aside all the ones that ruin the reservoirs for recreation and for wildlife. And that's most of them. That's most of them. You don't wanna cover the surface of those reservoirs with floating black plastic balls.
I've seen that.
Yeah. Some people push a chemical that forms a monomolecular layer on the surface that suppresses evaporation. It also suppresses the exchange of gases, and you know, could lower the oxygen levels. So, there are methods, but none of them are cheap and they all have significant side effects.
Okay, great, thank you. It's a great report, really appreciate it.
We don't have anything else from the council, Gary. Do you have more to your presentation?
I was going to show the model.
Okay. I probably have some public comment, when do you wanna do that? We have about 20 minutes.
We could do that now, if you want.
Let's do public comment, and then you can show us the model.
Doug McMillan?
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for this opportunity to speak. I'd like to talk some about our, the supply side of our water supply. I'm a retired civil engineer and I live at 2150 Meander and Prescott. Because of the imbalance in incoming flows and outgoing in our aquifers, we, most of the water that we pump out of the aquifer comes from stored volume. And the lower volcanic unit, where that water resides and where the city gets most of its water is from the lower volcanic unit, resides in cracks in the basalt, and also spaces between various lava flows that occurred over geologic time. And when I did a calculation on the amount of water in the lower volcanic unit, I came up with 1 million acre-feet, but that was all based on a very, you know, the porosity of basals can vary from none, no cracking, cracking, to a lot. I just came up with 8%. And what I'm learning more and more is the uncertainty of just how much stored volume we have, because the cracks may not necessarily interconnect with one another, and the, the amount of porosity is really unknown, and these flows between major lava flows could be providing the majority of it rather than the cracks. So, there's a lot of uncertainty. And so, what I'm saying is, if we increase our water demand with this uncertainty, we're depending upon volume, then we're taking on a risk. The upper unit is not very conductive at all. So, it's, it has water in it, but it's not good for large-scale municipalities. And one thing I found is, in the aquifer, because I've done 3D modeling of the, using a computer model, it's not homogeneous, it's very heterogeneous. It's like a three-dimensional puzzle. And in this model, you can do slices of it, you can do filtering, you can look at it different directions. I've done a lot of that for Little Chino, so. The way the water travels is not really well-known, you know? So, that's the reason why, for several years, I proposed macro rainwater harvesting to increase our supplies, so our water supply would become more sustainable, rather than just depending upon stored water, like the water in a swimming pool, you know? And you were talking about the recharge out at the airport. I think what Gary was talking about was the vertical travel time going down, but I actually came up with about 80 years, and that is the horizontal travel time from the recharge basin to the wellfield. And that's in the lower volcanic unit that has higher conductivities. The conductivity, yeah?
I'm sorry, thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to submit this letter to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Leslie Hoy?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. Mostly, I just have some questions. First, I'm having trouble seeing this week, but it'll get better. The cumulative overdraft from 1985 to 2016 was 3, is 310,000 acre-feet. I misspoke on the radio this morning. Secondly, I wondered, okay, at the last Water Issues Subcommittee meeting, which was in the beginning of January, we were told that the water use had flatlined for a couple of years, and then it had spiked up the last two years. And Councilman Shishka agreed that we heard that at the Water Issues Subcommittee, so I'd like that to be clarified as to whether it's spiked up or not. And then, I wondered what the acre-foot figure usage is for all, this would be a question for Mr. Woodard. What the figure is in acre-feet for all customers, including the residential and the commercial? I know that we're now calculating .17 acre-feet as residential use, but I keep getting a lot of actually non-answers about what we're doing about commercial use. It's all about, we're just gonna put it in the model, but, so I'd like to know, I'd like to have that clarified. And then, I'm wondering, why are we only looking out 10 years? That seems so short. And if we use too much water over the next 10 years, then we're depriving people in the following 10 years, and then what about the people in 50 years? And what about the people that are going to be left behind us? Considering the overdraft, I think we need to think really seriously about that. And then, my final question is, Mr. Woodard mentioned recharging or capturing rainwater that goes into the sewer system, and I'd like to know what the number is in acre-feet, the approximate number for how much he thinks we are capturing in rainwater in the sewer system each year? Thank you. Oh, I should ask, are our questions gonna get answered?
We have time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie.
Gordon Bond?
Good afternoon and thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry, I've got a bit of a cold, so I better stay back from the microphone. Gordon Bond, I live out by the airport. I think this is exciting. It really, really is exciting, because finally, finally, council staff have the opportunity to look ahead and actually see some real calculations of the impact on the aquifer of proposed water policy changes. There's a big one right now, in front of everybody. And I would hope that you can use this model now to share with us how you see the future and your impact, what it's going to be in affecting our overdraft. And I would hope that all the assumptions you use, the scenarios you look at, are gonna be open and available for us to review and identify for once what's gonna happen under different scenarios. I do have one quick question for Dr. Woodard, and that is simply, no matter how, or maybe it's a statement for a yes or no, no matter how efficient indoor water consumption is, no matter how efficient outdoor water consumption is, each new house will represent, excuse me, a net draw on the aquifer. Is that a fair statement?
If you remove the word "net."
Yes, absolutely net.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, the figures we were talking about were 5% here and 5% there, and so much at the recharge site, nevertheless, all that is lost with every new house.
Correct. Any new house with people living in it is going to be an additional water demand that otherwise wasn't there. It's just what we've seen over the last 20 years is, those new demands have been more than offset by the already existing households becoming more efficient.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
No, Mayor, that's all.
Okay. So, Gary, I wanna make sure we have time to see the model. We did get a few questions, and I don't know what you'd like to do first, either answer these questions or do the model, but we have about 10 minutes.
Mr. Mayor, a lot of the questions were, you know, what's this number or that number? And every question I heard about what's that number, it is shown in the model, so. I'm trying to think if there were any other questions.
Data from 1819, what is commercial use? You know, we cite the .17 for residential. Out beyond 10 years, why not farther?
Why not go beyond 10 years? The uncertainties of population and what percent of the people are here year-round versus part-time, plus how many of the new homes are multifamily versus single-family versus how efficient are the next generation of appliances and fixtures going to be? All those, all those uncertainties, all those errors, they multiply together, they don't add up, they multiply. And so, I could make a model that goes out farther, but I would be urging you not to pay much attention to anything beyond 10 years out. I guess the other comment I would make is, is if you can manage the system and put in place measures and means such that it looks like whoever's sitting in these chairs 10 years from now is gonna be in a better position than you are today, maybe that's the best you can do. That doesn't mean you don't do longer-term planning, but in forecasting demand, you just really can't look out much more than 10 years.
I'm skeptical you have the answer to this last one, but how much rainwater gets into the sewer system, we have no way of...
Well, there's been two years for which analysis was done. And I took those two data points and made a few assumptions, and I did estimate that going back from 2010, I think, through 2017.
In the model?
Yes.
Okay, let's look at the model.
Okay.
Oops. The model's gone. While Gary's doing that, Michael, we had a meeting with a gentleman here earlier this week, and we talked about having the model available for the public. Are we gonna be able to have some of this available on our portal?
You know, Gary and I have talked a little bit about this. We can provide as much or as little for public usage and, for lack of a better term, manipulation of this model. There's probably gonna be the ability to have some ability to manipulate it and use it. It might not be completely what we give staff, because there's probably a lot of things about individual accounts and what have you, but yeah, I mean, we're gonna have something that the public can use at some point.
Go ahead, Gary. Yeah, I apologize, some of this is gonna be hard to see, I might have to blow up portions of this so that you can see it. The various sheets you can see listed across, this is the intro, and it just basically explains why there's a model and broadly what the model is supposed to do. Next to that, the index sheet describes what's on every other sheet. And it not only describes what's on every other sheet, but it allows you to immediately jump there and jump back. So, this is a lot easier than just scrolling through the tabs at the bottom to try to figure out, you know, where was that sheet I wanted that had this in it? So, this describes them all and provides navigation. And so, the one that you use, where's my arrow? The one that you use to actually define a scenario is this one. This area that's called Policy Inputs, this is a dozen different conservation or supply enhancements, measures that could be taken. I'll blow this up in a minute, because I'm thinking you probably can't read that. And then, these are some of the other exogenous factors. The growth in population, the mix of housing type, is there a drought, if so, how long, how deep is the drought? This I mentioned, see where it says, Supply-Demand Summary for 2017? If I click on 2017, I can change the year, anywhere from 2010 to 2030. So, when you change these exogenous factors, you see it represented here. For example, right now, we've got no drought. Here's precipitation, so you can see it bounces around from year to year. Well, what do we do about the future? We take the average. It's gonna be wrong, but that's the best we can do. But if you want, you can go up here and instead of have, say, no drought, you can say, I want, I want a moderate drought. You can also say mild or severe, and then you can change the length of the drought. You can make it shorter or longer. Right now, I'm making the drought longer. You're all doomed. So, when I change that, when I change the precipitation, it's not just changing the precipitation, it's also changing everything that hinges on precipitation. It's changing how much water is available to you from the reservoirs. It's changing how much water you have to put on your turf. It's changing a lot of things. So, it's changing the demand by all these different categories as well. Everything's connected to everything. So, the actual reductions in demand will show up in these graphs, which I'll blow up in a minute, and actual changes, potential increases in supply are here. Here's the growth rate, and so, my default level is 1.5% a year, it's currently at 1.7%. So, that top graph, if... So that top graph, if I, if I lower this, you can see the population flattens out. If I crank this up to some ridiculous level, like you're going to grow several percent a year, you can see that getting steeper and steeper. Eventually the Y-axis resets, so it looks like it's not getting steeper because the numbers have changed. So changing anything here or here instantly changes all the, all the graphs. And I think, let me blow up the policy option inputs for a minute. So this shows conservation efforts. You could have an enhanced outdoor program for, for single-family residents. You could have an enhanced indoor program for single-family residents. Most of the things I put in here are things that could make a significant difference, but I also put in a few things that really don't make much difference, just to point out that they don't make much difference. So if you do an overall indoor conservation program, you do get some bang for the buck because it's going to affect those homes on septic. But it doesn't have that much of an effect because it has almost, you know, no impact on everybody on sewer, which is the great majority. Audits for, efficiency audits for your large commercial industrial customers, reducing customer-side leaks. That one actually doesn't work because I don't yet have a good estimate of what current leak rates are. Reduce the turf area. You can incrementally reduce the turf in the golf courses that are on effluent by 1% up to 15%. Reduce the turf at the homeowners' associations. You can, you can do that as well. And then there's this whole set of measures that affect those on septic's, where you have bigger rebates to get them to replace older appliances and fixtures, a gray water reuse program, mandatory upgrades at resale, convert those on septic to sewer, limit new construction on septic. So you can see the default, the baseline is, is very conservative. It's that you're not doing any of these things. So, so doing any of these things puts you in a better position. And then in terms of increased renewable supplies, you could increase rainwater harvesting rebates. You can maybe come up with enhanced management for the reservoirs, maybe not, but it's such a huge part of the total supply that I included it in there for argument's sake. Reduce system leakage. These are the leaks on your side, the city side of the water meter. So when I change any of these. Ah. Let me. Oh, sorry.
Gary, could we convert some of the septic's to sewer on this and see what it does?
Yes. I'd be happy to show you that.
Okay.
As soon as I get it so we can actually see. I apologize. Let's try 85.
Councilman Blair, this will be helpful for your commission, you know, when you can kind of start manipulating the data and see the kind of response.
Okay, so I'm going to, I'm going to say we're going to, we're going to limit new construction on septic and the, this graph here shows water use of single-family residences on septic. The blue is indoor, the red is outdoor. So let's go from no to yes. Whoops. And, did it move? It should have, yes. So now it's sloping downward. And now, now let's pile on. Let's also, we can do minor, moderate, or major conversion from, from septic to sewer. If I do major.
Yeah, look at that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure if you noticed, but if you look at this summary graph here, let me go back, let me undo that and watch, and watch this graph here. So that affected this graph, this graph, and that loss to the aquifer. It affected this graph, it affected this graph. So yeah, you can, you can see it, there's, there's a lot of potential there and I don't mean to minimize the economic or the possible political costs of some of these measures, but yeah, they, they have a big impact. I know why these curves are all going up. We have the population growing 4% a year. That's insane. You don't, you don't want that. So let's get back down to a reasonable number. Even that's pretty high, but we'll leave it at 1.5. So you can see if we have everything set to default, the, the net loss to the aquifer, oh, and, and we've thrown in a drought on top of that. So this is worse than my conservative baseline. This is, you don't do anything to improve anything and you have a drought. And, and there's, and there's the result. If I get rid of the drought. That, you can see, it's, it's very flat. It's very flat. There's, there's like hundreds of numbers adding up together to get out to these total forecasts and, and, you know, I looked at it and I thought, well, that's not exciting. That's not very interesting. So the other view, which, which I showed you before, this flow diagram view, this is showing the same information just a different way. So you can point out to people, it's like, look, of all of the water we pump, in this particular year, it was 7,147 acre-feet. Most of it is metered uses. We've got some un-metered deliveries and we've got some system uses, but most of it's metered. Most of that goes to sewer customers, but a fair amount does go to these unsewered customers. And then, you know, of that, here's how much goes to outdoor and indoor and here's the indoor going to the wastewater treatment plant and then back to the recharge basin and in. So once again, here, I can, you know, I can change it from 2017 to this year and all the numbers shift. And if you really want to get into gory details, all the equations are there for this view.
I'll probably double-check that later.
Would you please? I hate auditing myself. That would be great. And then under demand details, we're basically just taking the sewered customers and breaking them down in the table into like nine categories here. We've, we've got them in, in four categories. So once again, here, we can change the year. We could, we could go out to 2024 if we wanted to. And once again, below the table is all the equations. Each one of those cells contains an equation. Oh, and one other thing I did not mention, which I really should have, is on this view, if I click on a particular, like wastewater treatment plants, I want to know more about wastewater treatment plants. There's more than you want to know. And then you can just click here and get right back there. And you could say, "I want to know about septic tanks," and there's that. So that's another form of navigation that's built in.
I wish we had more time. This exceeds at least my expectations of what you're going to do. It's very intuitive and interactive. It's going to be a tremendous tool for the city, for planning, for making good decisions because we can see the effect of a decision without actually making the decision to see if it's going to be worthwhile or not. So this is invaluable, Gary. We really, really appreciate it. Much anticipated. Very grateful for your work, even though it took a little longer than we thought, but we're glad we're sitting here with this data and it's, it's much appreciated.
Mayor, I know we're in a rush, but Gary's committed to training up our staff on the usage of this because it's, it is a fairly comprehensive model. Once we have our hands or arms around that, we'll certainly do presentations to the public.
Yeah, my point earlier was I'd just like to get as much of this out to the public as soon as we feel comfortable with, you know, our staff using the model and then being able to allow the, the public to interact with it as much as possible. I know there's some privacy with individual meters and all that kind of stuff, but Gary, thanks again. Thanks for coming up. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members.
This meeting is adjourned. We'll be back in five minutes.